I'm going to call this meeting to an end. Sorry to start you there, youngins.[6.22][6.22](laughter) That's this gavel. They tell me I have to hit this thing three times. So, sorry about that. All right. All right. Stand for a pledge of allegiance and prayer, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would I ask that you lead us and guide us through this council meeting? Special prayer for our citizens, a special prayer for the citizens in the state of Texas, specifically Houston. Ask that you continue to provide covering over those people, that they may make it through a very trying situation that they're dealing with. Prayer for our public safety, several of which who went to the state of Texas to provide support. Ask that you continue to lead and guide this council to make the decisions that benefit the majority of the citizens in the city of Lawrence. It's in your blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Next on the agenda, we have a determination of quorum. Looks like we have a quorum. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation by the mayor Collier to the Oaklanding STEM Club.
Well, who would have thought, back in May, when I first heard your presentation, that we would be dealing with something like Harvey and now we have Irma coming up? So, I think particularly, I suppose, important that we do something like this today. So, I'm going to read a real quick proclamation. There'll be a resolution later on in the council meeting that we'll go over. And I'm not turning over to you guys for your presentation. Okay? I'm going to actually read it to you. I'll use my teacher voice. I'm going to get away from the mic over here. To all whom these residents may come greetings. Whereas the city of Lawrence, Indiana celebrates its citizens' accomplishments with pride and delight. Whereas the East End Club from Oakland Elementary School has met weekly this school year and has made many outside trips in order to use their voices to bring attention to climate change. And whereas 25 students their sponsor, Mrs. Laura Gatz, dedicate themselves to learning as much as they could this year about climate change in hopes of educating and affecting change in others. Whereas the East End Club, name is Kids for Climate, they created the motto, "Without the earth, there is no economy." And whereas the city of Lawrence, Indiana, supports our students' best efforts and recognizes Kids for Climate as committed community members. And whereas Oakland Elementary School's East End Club's goal is to present their findings to the community members as possible, so they may join them in adopting climate recovery actions. Now therefore I, Stephen K. Collier, mayor of the city of Lawrence, do hereby proclaim September 5th, 2017, as East End Kids for Climate. City of Lawrence also recognizes this organization. The resolution is called later on being offered by the Council.
All right. Awesome. Awesome. So, next on the list, it looks like someone's ready.[248.76][248.76](laughter) A presentation by the Oaklanding Kids for Climate Club.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here this evening presenting to you, although I'm not a presenter, but merely the facilitator of some amazing, passionate kids who care an awful lot about this community, their future, and our planet. What you will hear are their personal testimonies that ask for your leadership in making climate change recovery a priority. These kids have been around the city using mass transit, visited urban gardens and farms, studied the effects of greenhouse gases on our planet, and have met with legislators and mayors. They're serious thinkers and are hoping that you're serious listeners. They appear in a documentary appropriately called Little Warriors, which has been shown across the country at film festivals. I think you'll find that they do not give up easily. And presenting first tonight are Sarah Anderson and Heaven Hillman, both of which attend Fall Creek Valley Middle School.
I'm Sarah Anderson.
And I'm Heaven Hillman.
Climate change. Are Lawrence kids safe now and in the future?
First off, who are we? The group of kids appearing before you this evening are the future of Lawrence, future workers, future taxpayers, future parents. There are countless reasons to stay here after college, and if the council passes the climate recovery resolution tonight, our futures will be even brighter.
What do you know about climate change? Here's what we know.
Climate change is a bad thing that could one day ruin our lives. Climate change is increased levels of atmospheric carbon dioxide caused by fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are nonrenewable resources that are bad for our
Scientists are clear about climate change. Burning fossil fuels at an alarming rate, humans are creating a thick blanket of greenhouse gases. This causes melting polar ice caps, rising sea levels, extreme heat and weather events, unhealthy air qualities and waterways.
Is Lawrence ready? On the city government website, it says, "Lawrence offers award-winning schools, affordable housing, a beautiful state park, and a friendly atmosphere." What if we could add that our government is carbon neutral? What if we led the state in renewable, clean energy?
What are climate recovery goals? There are so many ways to achieve carbon neutrality. Some examples are responsible transportation options, alternative energy choices, and encourage locally grown food. Wouldn't it be great if we could develop a mayor's youth council?
Carmel passed the resolution on February 20th, 2017. Indianapolis passed it on February 27th, 2017. Is Lawrence ready to make some changes?
These are Carmel kids working with Mayor Brainard.
Our club attended the city council meeting to give our testimony and support this resolution in Indianapolis. This is our friend and fellow member of our East End Club, Juliana
Thank you for listening to our presentation. We hope you will take our ideas into consideration.[507.34][507.34](applause)
The next person in our group to be presenting is Katie Wooden.
Mayor and the members of city council, I'm here before you as a youth who's part of our future of our city, of our state, and of our country. With ever-increasing heat during the summer, our mild winters, and wildfire seasons lasting longer than before, we can't ignore climate change because we are concerned about the future of our planet. We want to help change the future for the better. That's why Kids for Climate implanted an idol-free zone at our school. I would like to share some information and recommendations on being idol-free to help fight for climate change. The U.S. EPA has found that one minute of idling produces more carbon monoxide than the smoke of three packs of cigarettes. Here are some reasons they recommend to stop idling. One, it makes the air cleaner by cutting down on hazardous pollution in the town and community. These pollutants have been linked to serious human illnesses, including heart disease, chronic bronchitis, and cancer. Two, it helps the environment. Every 10 minutes, your engine is off. You'll prevent one pound of carbon dioxide from being released. I would like to recommend that the government vehicles have a policy for idling. So, when you are voting, think of your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, or the students and children in the city of Lawrence. Please think of the future you'd want to leave for them and us. I hope it is a bright and clean future.
And next, we have Ruby Kurino.
My name is Ruby Kurino, and I go to Oakland Elementary in Lawrence Township. This is our world and it is how we choose it to be. We decide if we are going to take care of it or abandon it. Right now, we're abandoning it. This is the wrong decision, but we can still change. Climate change is affecting our world in ways some of us don't even realize. Look at what's happening in Texas and Louisiana with Hurricane Harvey. Though hurricanes are natural occurrence, is the severity of Hurricane Harvey is because of us. If we took better care of our earth, storms wouldn't be as bad. When we're killing our earth by cutting down too many trees and emitting greenhouse gases into our air, we're causing severe weather to form. When I'm an adult, when I am able to get a job and have kids, will this be a better earth or a worse one? This is Cora Payton.[695.13][695.13](applause)
My name is Cora Payton, and I'm 10 in 5th grade, and I'm here to talk to you about locally grown foods. We should have food closer to people and not farther, using trucks and boats. For one, it uses less gas and fuel, which is less money. Also, and it doesn't pollute the air. This is bad for you and me. Let's support locally grown food to decrease our carbon footprint.[732.01][732.01](applause) Next, we have Nick Keltner.
My name is Nicholas Keltner, and I'm 10 years old, and I am in 5th grade. Lawrence is a green community. We have a beautiful state park and weekly farmer's market. And our schools that focus on environmental science. We are making a change, but we can make a bigger change. I'm an athlete, and I want to continue to play sports in high school and even maybe college. I need clean air. I don't want my kids to know that when they step outside to get some pressure, or play on a sports team, or go to recess in their future elementary schools, that those health issues are a possibility. I think you, the leaders of our community, should promise that you will try to have a better air quality by the time I can get a job. Thank you for your time, and I hope you can make a change in this community for the kids now and in the future. And now Juliana Espinoza.[805.23][805.23](applause)
Hi. My name is Juliana Espinoza. I am 10 years old and in 5th grade. Growing up, kids find out what their interest and what their dream job is when they grow up, including me. I want to be a nature photographer. I always liked pictures of the beautiful nature, and that's the problem, because we don't know if there's going to be any nature at all. I want the pictures to show kids playing in the streets with big green bushes and trees behind them, not kids being held back from the streets to protect them because of all of the pollution in the air. Not only that, but when you look in the background, you see dead brown grass and just the stems of the trees. I want the color for a life world, not the dark, dead one. Our future is in your hands, and make sure it doesn't fall, because not just that we're going to fall, but everything living on earth. So, we need to make a difference, so we need to work together to make a difference, so every single one of us and the ones coming can live a happy life.[882.82][882.82](applause)
Thank you again for your time and your attention. These Lawrence kids took this on themselves. They called themselves Kids for Climate and started their campaign for change and recovery. They represent the best of this generation, a generation that will be based on living within what this planet provides. Their tagline on their shirts, "Without earth, there is no economy." They are truly little warriors for their planet.
Wow. Wow. You know, we make tough decisions up here. Some popular, some not so popular. But this is a no-brainer for me. And Ms. Espinoza, like you, I enjoy nature as well. I enjoy watching the animal shows and everything else. I don't want to get too close, but I do enjoy it. But I think you guys are very courageous, and you continue doing what you're doing. Take the fight to Washington. Woo. All right. Next on the agenda, council members, special recognitions,
Mr. President.
Councilman Freeman.
If I could ask the city to look into a bike depot, renting bikes on the fort for people to enjoy our beautiful nature and everything, and launch a community involvement with other projects such as our beautiful city parks. Seeing how Indy hasn't given us any money for sprucing up our city parks and pushing Indy parks with facelifts, it seemed like we should get something for our parks. We're in Marion County, too, and we're part of Unigov, so I feel that we should get something for our parks, other than what we are trying to get from the property taxes. And another, I have another. Has the city looked into the financial impact that we would have to transport our prisoners downtown? And do we need to hire more policemen? And I know some of the residents were telling me about graffiti on the Marsh supermarket, and we have some of the graffiti on the utility boxes in the city of Lawrence. I wanted to know if we had a drug task force or something that, you know, we don't know about? And is there a final design? I don't know if this project was scrapped or anything about the Franklin Road project, but there was supposed to be a final design from Hanson, what that cost would have been. And also, the Tiff district was expanded and approved by the council. What were some of the city's economic goals for that now? What's that?
All right, Councilman Freeman. Any other councilor?
Mr. President.
Councilman Jones.
I'd like to give kudos to our DPW leader, Mr. Bill Anthony. A couple of times, we met this week, and he was very prompt on meeting and worked out some things with me, so I appreciate that. And if I could for a second, ask a couple of people to stand. We have a couple of unsung heroes kind of sitting in the background here, and that's the principal, Mrs. Jenny Sheets. Could you stand for a second? Also, Mrs. Kathy Prince-Williams, her assistant principal. Also, we couldn't leave out Laura Gatz, kind of the leader here. Mrs. Brooklyn Patton. And Mrs. Karen Harvey. Thank you for your leadership and your example. You did a fine job with these kids.[1139.15][1139.15](applause)
Councilperson Shavlot.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Two quick items. Want to give a huge thanks to David Lottz. There was an issue over in my district with the drainage issue, and within a week's time, he was able to get his crew over there and fix that. In fact, I'm holding here in my hand a nice thank you card from the constituent, which is rare to get, a thank you card, so I really appreciate David and his team. Also, over the last few weeks, if you haven't seen it, there was an article in the Indianapolis Business Journal specifically highlighting Lawrence, and I can say that it's nice to see Lawrence in print that has a lot of good things to say about it, and it's not, wasn't lost on me, that a lot of it had to do with our fiscal situation and our finances. It's a long road. We're getting there, but it was a really nice article, so if you have a chance to look at it, take a look at it, and you'll feel pretty proud about your city.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilor? Anyone else? All right. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of regular meetings for August 7th, 2017, and August 16th, 2017. Motion on the floor.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Wheeler. Second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Freeman. Any discussion? All in favor, by a show of hands, or approval? Any opposed? Motion carries to approve the minutes. Signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payments. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Wheeler. Any discussion? All in favor for approval of the vouchers, by a show of hands? Any opposed? Motion carries to sign that vouchers. Next on the agenda, we have reporter committees. Code.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wheeler.
We held a code meeting earlier this evening, and the motion was passed unanimously to recommend the resolution to full council to pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have unfinished business. Proposal number 13, 2017. City clerk?
Proposal number 13, 2017, introduced by Councilwoman Wheeler. A proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, to establish an all-way stop intersection at Briar Hill Drive and Bent Oak Lane.
Okay. As procedure, we'll assign that to code. Correct?
That was what the...
Was already was in there?
That was the report I just gave you. I apologize for not being specific.
Okay.[1327.48][1327.48](laughter)
Yeah. Proposal number 13 was approved by unanimously.
Unanimously, okay. All right. All right, so, motion on the floor for passing of proposal number 13, 2017.
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Wheeler. Second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Freeman. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wells.
A question that came to mind after the code meeting, but I was just curious, was there any kind of a study done by either public safety or the street department that would necessitate this being passed?
Okay.
No studies were completed by those two organizations. However, we were speaking with the police department and Deputy Chief Bigsby, where they did do some studies to identify that area and the issues that were happening.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any further discussion at this time? Motion on the floor, second, all in favor for proposal number 13 for passing, by a show of hands. Any opposed? We have seven to one. Motion carries. That was Wells? Yes, Councilwoman Wells. That was the only one. All right. Under new business, consideration of council, appointment to utility service board. All councilors should have a... ballot. And do we have any names for consideration?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Giles.
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Tracy Boyd.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Make sure you sign a date, your ballot, please.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wells.
May I ask, who is currently serving on that board now for us?
That would be Tracy Boyd and Harry Jingles are the council picks.
All right, thank you.
Make sure you sign and date.
Eight ballots were cast, and Tracy Boyd is elected to serve
Congratulations on reselection for representing the council on the USB, Ms. All right. It's funny, these things are supposed, you're supposed to be able to read better with these things, huh?[1573.83][1573.83](laughter) Had to take them off to read. Okay, so, next on the agenda, we have proposal number 14, 2017.
Proposal number 14, 2017, introduced by Councilwoman Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana regarding the removal of weeds and rank vegetation.
All right. This was the first look, I take it? And, correct? This is first look. Okay. We're going to assign this to code. All right, drum roll. Where the drums are? Come on, gang. Come on. Come on.[1624.58][1624.58](laughter) All right. Next on the agenda, we have resolution number 7, 2017.
Resolution number 7, 2017, introduced by Councilors Shavlot and Jones. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana concerning the reduction in carbon emissions and increasing energy efficiency and renewable energy use.
Is there a motion on the floor to pass?
No move. Second.
Councilperson Shavlot. Second, Councilman Jones. Any discussion? All in favor, by a show of hands?[1669.11][1669.11](applause) Unanimous. Resolution 7 passed. Good job. Guys, keep it up. All right, next on the agenda, we have proposal number 15, 2017.
Proposal number 15, 2017, introduced by Councilwoman Giles. A proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2018 budget year.
All right, this is first look, correct, Councilwoman Giles?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to assign this to finance. Back in business. All right. Next on the agenda, we have proposal number... Oh, before that, if there are any citizen want to make comments, make sure on the back of the, in the back of the room on the table, there's a signed-up sheet that you can sign if you want to make comments to the council or address the city. All right. Proposal number 16, 2017.
Proposal number 16, 2017, introduced by Councilwoman Giles. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2018.
All right. Going to assign this to finance as well.
Mr. President.
Councilman Jones.
I can interrupt you for a second. I know some people have some commitments in this group. Okay if we excuse some of them to go?
Oh, if you're more than free to excuse yourself at this time. And I will say to you kids, keep up the good work, and I appreciate your courtesy and your respect and your professionalism.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.[1784.28][1784.28](applause) Oh, by the way, do you guys have like a, some kind of way we can contribute to support you kids or anything?
Sure, we can come up with...[1796.58][1796.58](laughter)
I'm like...
Yeah, I'll be connected via email.
Okay, thank you, all right. All right. I kind of like those kids being here, man, to keep the, keep the adults humble. Thank you, Council Jones.
Thank you, sir.
Where we left off at? Okay, so-
17. Most of our audience.
All right, next on the agenda, we have proposal number 17, 2017.
Proposal number 17, 2017, introduced by Council Giles. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the Police Department and Fire Department for the year 2018.
All right, that's gonna go to finance as well. Proposal number 18.
Proposal, proposal number 18, 2017, introduced by Council Giles. A proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana regarding employee benefits and overtime.
All right, that's gonna go into finance as well. Proposal 19, 2017.
Proposal number 19, 2017, introduced by Council Giles. A proposal for an ordinance transferring unused and unencumbered tax levy funds to the general fund.
That is gonna go to the finance as well. Jason, really? No, just kidding.
Budget books. Well, we, we are pleased to present the 2018 budget proposal. We've prepared a short video we'd like to play, and would like to hand out the books as well.
Okay.
Let me get the light, Jason?
Hello, I'm Steve Collier, Mayor of the city of Lawrence. With a great sense of pride and accomplishment that I present you the 2018 proposed budget for the city of Lawrence. Controller Jason Fenwick and his staff have devoted countless hours to provide you with a transparent view of the funding and the financial future of the city of Lawrence. Although revenue sources remain essentially flat for municipalities like ours, this budget continues to reflect a responsible operating balance that protects against unforeseen emergencies while it addresses many areas that must be maintained and in many cases upgraded. This budget represents a responsible and well-thought-out commitment to providing essential city services to all of our citizens. The financial challenges presented by limited increases in revenue for most cities across the state of Indiana are compounded by increasing costs at nearly every level of local government. This budget reflects our continued focus on improving public safety, our commitment to providing necessary services, continuing to improve our roads while also encouraging economic growth. We've also addressed the high quality of work provided by our city employees and the continued expectation that they will deliver these services despite our ever-increasing challenges. Further development of standard practices and procedures for citywide departments will support the contributions of employees. Lawrence must continue to grow as we take our place as one of the leading cities in central Indiana. Celebrating and embracing our diversity will help to create an environment for quality economic and cultural growth. As we continue to be vigilant managers of the city's finances, we remain steadfastly committed to achieving progressive goals with a strong, highly qualified administrative staff and a common council that is committed to taking the next step for the city of Lawrence. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office at 317-545-6191, or the city controller's office. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Fenwick, city controller for the city of Lawrence, and I am pleased to present the fiscal year 2018 budget proposal for the city of Lawrence. This budget proposal is a sound and responsible fiscal plan that will enable the city to serve the interests of its citizens and visitors. This budget will provide appropriate resources to serve our community and provide continued public safety protection, maintain our roads and streets, invest in our park system, and continue upgrading our long-term capital needs, all while striving to enhance the overall quality of life for the citizens of our community. This budget proposal will also form the basis for our submittal to the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Program. We are pleased to have received this award for 2017 and look forward to submitting the fiscal year 2018 budget for consideration. The 2018 budget will be introduced at the city of Lawrence Common Council Meeting on Tuesday, September 5th, at 6:30 PM. A common council finance meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, September 12th, at 6:00 PM for initial review of the 2018 budget. A public hearing has been scheduled for October 2nd, and adoption is scheduled for October 18th. The budget calendar, along with the 2018 budget proposal, is available online at our city's website at www.cityoflawrence.org. I would like to now provide you with an overview of the city's largest funding source, the general fund, and provide our funding goals and priorities for 2018. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the city and represents the largest financial operation of the city. Property taxes represent the largest revenue source for the general fund, accounting for 41% of all revenue collected. A payment in lieu of taxes or pilot from the city of Lawrence Utilities and a payment from the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority for Public Safety Services account for nearly 18% of revenue collected, and local income taxes account for nearly 16%. These three revenue sources account for almost three-quarters of the revenue collected in the general fund, for approximately 15.1 million dollars. As the largest revenue source, property taxes are limited due to property tax caps enacted by the state of Indiana several years ago. The impact of these caps in fiscal year 2017 is expected to be almost 1.6 million dollars, and is forecasted to increase to 1.9 million dollars in 2018. Without property tax caps, the city of Lawrence would collect 1.9 million more in revenue than is expected to in 2018. Local units of government across Indiana continue to face the same challenge in providing vital services in a revenue-constrained environment. The general fund provides funding that is vital to the operation of the city. About 76% of the funding proposed for 2018 is devoted to public safety, which represented, represents an increase of approximately 640,000 dollars in general fund funding from 2017. Collection of trash, parks and recreation, and issuing of permits and code enforcement represent other major uses of funds in the general fund. The 2018 general fund request for funding is a balanced budget, where anticipated revenues equal anticipated expenditures. This budget request represents the second consecutive balanced budget proposal. Providing a path for the long-term financial stability of the city is paramount to achieving our long-term goals. As you may recall, during last year's budget process, we set a goal of maintaining a minimum general fund operating reserve balance of 10% of budgeted expenditures. Without a minimum operating balance, the city's financial health is in jeopardy, forcing it to either stop providing certain services or reducing the level of services that we provide to the citizens of Lawrence. We accomplished this goal at the end of fiscal year 2016 with an operating reserve of approximately 2.3 million dollars, or 11% of budgeted expenditures. Accomplishing this goal was one of the factors that contributed to the city's recent bond rating upgrade to A+ from Standard and Poor's. With the 2018 proposed budget, we are taking the next step and have set a new operating reserve target of 15% of budgeted expenditures. Funding highlights of this fiscally responsible 2018 budget request include continued focus on public safety initiatives, proposed spending on public safety has been increased by nearly 700,000 dollars across all funds, and includes funding for the purchase of new police vehicles, beyond the 15 new vehicles purchased in 2017, a 68% increase in funding for police training. This marks over a 200% increase in funding for training since 2016. It continues funding for body cameras and replacement of tasers, a 3% salary increase for all police officers and firefighters, funding to replace an ambulance, anticipated replacement of all air packs for the fire department, which are nearing their 10-year useful life. It also provides an emphasis on quality of life initiatives with an approximate 18% increase in funding for the park department. This funding increase includes major upgrades to the Steric Center, which are planned for 2018, playground upgrades at Veterans Park, purchase of new mowers and vehicle replacement. There's also an unprecedented funding for the street department, which has increased by almost 2 million dollars since 2015. It includes the following: additional funding for paving, dedicated funding in the amount of 100,000 dollars for streetlight repairs and replacement, dedicated funding in the amount of 40,000 dollars for sidewalk repairs, continued fleet upgrades, including the purchase of a third new salt truck since 2016. Overall, the 2018 budget proposal includes 1.2 million dollars in capital improvements and continued upgrades to our IT infrastructure. Despite all we have set out to accomplish in 2018, challenges still remain. Funding sources are limited and remain challenged by the property tax caps enacted several years ago. Identifying new sources of revenue and revenue enhancement opportunities remains one of our biggest goals and challenges. The city also continues to face a major challenge when funding post-employment benefits to our retiring employees. This budget proposal includes 200,000 dollars in funding to the trust fund created last year for funding accrued leave payouts. We are only beginning to address this challenge, and it will take several more years of diligence to build this trust fund reserve. The budget is a reflection of the hard work, dedication, and teamwork demonstrated by all city employees. We have come a long way in the last 18 months in moving Lawrence forward, and while challenges remain, we are taking the next step with this fiscally responsible budget to maintain the city's financial health. We look forward to working with our common council as you consider this recommended 2018 budget proposal. Thank you.
The 2018 budget is an ambitious and fiscally responsible proposal. It's an honor to present this budget to our citizens and the common council. We look forward to our upcoming deliberations and are looking forward to working with the common council and taking the next step for the city of Lawrence.
I can make a few more comments. So, obviously, in the video, we did lay out what the proposed schedule is for the timeline, which is very similar to last year's. So, again, there will be a finance meeting next Tuesday at 6 o'clock. We have proposed advertising the budget on September 20th, so that will lock us in post-advertising on the dates. The public hearing is October 2nd, and adoption on October 18th. You have a thick book, which is similar in format to the book from last year. It contains details on each of the, the funds in the proposed budget, the biggest one being the general fund. There's a section for other operating funds, Public Safety Tax Fund, Internal Service Fund, and Debt Service Fund, so all of the detail by departments and line items are contained in those sections. And then lastly, you should have received a copy of the Citizens Guide, and this is really meant for the public, but also for the council, but it kind of provides a high level view of what the priorities are for this 2018 budget. And additional copies will be available on our website, as, along with the detailed budget proposal. So, Pat, that's, no other questions?
Mr. President, I have a question. You said folks can get this on the website, but can they get a, can they come in and get a hard copy, or?
We do have some hard copies right now in the back of the room.
Okay, for folks.
Yes, and then we will have a, a few additional hard copies available up in the controller's office.
We'll encourage them to go to the website.
Yep.
Is that something too, that we can maybe share the link on the Facebook page as well?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. There are no citizens' comments. All right. Does anyone else have anything else to add for the good or consideration?
Shit. Doesn't work.
No? No? We are adjourned.